Go ahead and attend that protocol. Sean Woods, present. Ife.
Present.
Betty Todes.
Here.
Jimmy Doyle.
Here.
Marilyn Timmons.
Here.
Paul Watson.
Here.
Lee Redd.
Present.
Nevermind. Joe, after the pledge of allegiance, would you mind leaving us an invocation? If everybody will please rise, throw me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What questions have you, Father? We come to you at this time, Father, to ask you, Father, to continue to be with this council, Father, that they may do their job and do it right. And, Father, also to help get along with its financials and everything like this, and spend the money wisely, but appropriately as far as, Father. Just ask you to just continue to be with us. We know that the city can be a great city if we all try. And do our part, Father. We just ask you now to just be with the mayor and all the council members and let everything just turn out fine, just like it should be, if you understand. We pray.
Thank everybody for taking the time. Next thing we have on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Okay, we have a motion to adopt by Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Todes. All those in favor, please raise your hand. There are any votes. This passes six to zero. Next item is to approve and ratify bills received. Now, the, uh, in the bills, we're going to see a bill to lease equipment for, uh, later around fifteen thousand. That is, if you all remember, about a year ago, uh, we had discussed the middle school sidewalk. We worked with the middle school or the school board on sharing the cost on fixing that and making it not only safer, but maybe accessible, and it's turned out very, very nice. The school board's going to be following up here shortly, and they're going to do some additional work for that. I think they're going to want to bring in some rock and ditch line and touch some other spots, but they said they'll take care of that.
Question?
Yes.
Who's the supplier that we buy these things for? For a hundred and fifty acres?
That is, uh, the court, or not the court, excuse me, the jail. No, that is for the jail, because we went, uh, quite some time ago, we went away from, we went to a tobacco-free facility. The, we purchased them, and the inmates have to purchase them from the police department.
Oh, okay. Second question is, are we buying military uniforms for the police?
No, the uniform company that we, that the police department has got their uniforms through is the military, it's that military surplus company that's listed. It's just, yeah, that's just the name of the company.
Question?
Yes.
Page four, down there, it says.
I can't hear you, Paul.
Down there, page four, at the very bottom, ten-milligram tablet.
Can you say that?
Very bottom.
Please, please. Oh. Eight dollars?
Second question, can we obtain one? They ship, they can pay the price. That's what friends of the zone, two hundred and fifty dollars?
I'm going to see if they did it, but it might be. We'll go over him shot and hit nothing. I'll have, oh, to answer your question about the eight-dollar item, the ten-milligram tablet, AC approved. I'll find out, and I'll let you know specifically what that is for. Are there any other questions about the bills? If there are not, I'll entertain a motion to approve and ratify bills received.
I'm currently on a bill for thirty-two thousand. Is that what you just now was discussing?
No. Mr. Martin.
Senator.
That's the treatment plant project. That is the contractor company that's working on the treatment plant upgrades.
I make a motion to repay the bills.
We have a motion by Councilman Grant to pay the bills. We have a second.
I'm second.
Seconded by Mrs. Timmons. All those in favor, please raise your hand. There are any votes. This passes six to zero. And all of you, uh, received a copy of this in packets or should be in front of you. I called the bank this morning, and these are live balances as of about ten o'clock this morning for all of our accounts up in Mid-America, just to kind of give you guys a snapshot of where we're at. Next item on agenda. Okay, we need to approve the minutes for the October third meeting. Is there any question about the minutes or the corrections that need to be made? Okay, we have a motion to approve minutes, matter of my bills. By Mr. Todes, seconded by Councilman Moore. All those in favor, please raise your hand. There are any votes. This passes six to zero. Moving on to unfinished business. Uh, first thing I'd like to discuss is the library. Is Mr. Campbell here?
Uh, he was speaking for Mr. Campbell. He said, you know, he can't take time to run back and forth all the time, so... Would you like, so here we are, his sisters are here.
Okay.
And just to, you know, of course, that he got the termite, um, not termite, the asbestos thing taken care of for about a fourth of the cost of what it should have cost. When they took the asbestos siding off the outside, we were down to Rawlwood, and we had a private donor step forth and do the material and the labor to put on the protective thing that goes under the siding so that weather wouldn't get to Rawlwood. He has been waiting. He put several calls in and was not answered to know what his next step should be. He, the library is viable. It, you know, there's nothing wrong with the boards and, oh, it needs a new floor, but the most cost-efficient and long-lasting solution to the problem is to put a concrete floor in it, and the fireplace is already on its own base, so there's, you know, nothing needs to be done with the fireplace. So all you need to do is the floor joists, the rest of the floor needs to be taken out, and then you can, there's a, you can put gravel in just through the front door, you know, so there's no tearing out and wanting nothing to get the gravel in there. And bring it.
Pre-treat for termites.
Pre-treat for termites on the ground. Anyway, bring the gravel up to a level, and then put concrete, a concrete floor in there, and then the very last of it, put a stained concrete slick finish on it and stain it, and you will never have to carpet it, tile it, or do anything. You're done. Put a concrete floor. You're not going to have to worry about the weight of the books on there or anything else.
And I think that was, uh, that was one of the options that was discussed was putting, actually, instead of going with, going with wood, a lot of the suggestions that I've got from the community was put concrete and put concrete underneath the foundation and bring everything up.
He is ready to bring something in about midweek and get a bid on it. Now, once he gets his bid, are we going to have to wait until the first of December again?
At this point, if the council has, uh, we have to advertise it for, I think, a minimum of three weeks, depending on where the price falls. If it's, uh, over a certain threshold, we do have to advertise.
What is that threshold?
I'm not sure what the amount is. I think it's over five thousand, something like that.
He ballparked the figure of five thousand dollars to get this done. So if it's under five thousand, we can get an okay without waiting for the next council meeting?
That would be correct.
Okay, I will pass that information on to him. Now, would that include? Is that just a concrete floor? That includes taking up, well, can you get a bid from Ryan?
I'll get a bid from somebody.
Okay, she'll get a bid from somebody. So is that all included in the five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
If it's under five thousand, then we can accept it?
The... I think if it's under five thousand, I think, uh, we don't, we don't need a council motion on it just yet. If it's under that threshold, we don't have to send out for bids, and that can just be handled in the day-to-day, uh, day-to-day workings of the city. What I will do is monitor. We receive any bids for that. I will have our city engineer, John, take a look at it, and once he gives me an okay that, yes, these are good, we can start proceeding with that. My goal with the, with the library is to make it more structurally sound, not just for the next five years.
Well, that's what I said, cost-efficient and long-lasting.
Everything that John and I have worked with through the city in our discussions, we keep, we keep going back to a ten- or fifteen-year plan.
Right.
We don't have to come back to the present year. So that's why it would take a little bit of time, but we want to make sure that it's done right and that everybody's input is solicited.
Okay, when he gets his bid, then who should he present it to?
Either he can bring it to City Hall, he can give it to Jesse, and/or get it to me. I'm in and out, so the best person to mail it to or to bring it to would be Jesse, because he's also the recorder of deeds.
Would be Jesse? Jesse? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and then as soon as Jesse, as soon as we're in receiver, Jesse will call me and let me know where we sit at as far as...
Can he email it to you, Jesse?
Mm-hmm. May you, may you, may I know address where you came from?
Okay, that's, he just, you know...
Yeah, I gotta say, the work that was done, when they were tearing out the asbestos, I was really kind of shocked with just how quick these people were working. There was two guys on the outside, and the foreman was kind of monitoring traffic, so to speak, as far as making sure that nobody went underneath the red tape. And I asked him about that, and he said, "Well, if somebody was to have went underneath the tape, his company could have been fined ten thousand dollars." Just to have, and to put it in context for everybody, for a government, uh, for a governmental body to have a structure, have asbestos removed. One of the reasons why we have to have people that are training to do it is they have to specifically go through a training program that the contractor pays for before he can ever, that person can ever step day one on a job site removing asbestos. And in talking with them, just the investment in the employee themselves is about a twelve-hundred-dollar investment just so that employee is trained and knows what they're doing and is removing it safely.
And a lot of that was donated?
Yes.
They made a pretty good-sized donation in the work part of that.
Yes, they, the foreman had talked to me and told me that the, uh, the two workers that he had there were actually volunteering a good portion of their time that day just to keep the cost down.
Well, they were Dixon boys.
Yes.
That was our Dixon boys, okay? We'll tell Tom to go ahead with this. I'll get your email address, and he can send it to you, and I'm assuming you will get back to me.
Yes.
He was a little bit, um, nobody had done back to him, so he wasn't sure what he was supposed to do. You know, and he has quite a few irons in the fire, so we'll try this one more time here.
Absolutely, thank you. Next to the issue.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Got a question. By putting out the figure that you can't, so you don't need a bid, doesn't that kind of give it, give an edge to this person?
No.
To go underneath that bid or try to?
Through all the knowledge, as far as what the bid thresholds are, they would just have to go to the council meeting minutes and find out exactly what that threshold is.
Okay.
The library that they've done, culvert ordinance, Mr. Stumpy, knows where we're at with that, what we need, what we don't need?
Quite, quite a lot of voice. I still have the information about the offset from another property line or line of sight stuff, just so I get that and finish up the ordinance on the culvert thing, the, the border line, so...
Chief Reckel, uh, I know you and Mr. Forthman both had talked about the line-of-sight issues for the culvert ordinances. Are you still developing those and kind of where we at with them, both of you guys?
I believe that's deferred to him. I have nothing in writing as far as, is there a criminal law or anything as far as culverts versus intersections, line of sights, driveways, et cetera? That's a whole different arena than ours.
Robbie, I'll be getting with you tomorrow morning on this.
Okay.
See if we can't get an excellent value.
Okay. I believe as far as the feet and everything, it's going to be dictated by MoDOT probably.
Yeah. What's, can you say that so everybody can hear?
As far as the distances from the intersections and from driveways, et cetera, and the line of sight, that's all going to be dictated by MoDOT as far as distance, most likely.
Okay.
I can call.
Do they have anybody in the way to look at that, my pal?
Jesse, Jesse, bring it to us.
Okay. Still steady?
She's taken.
Well, and then...
Talking with John and Paul.
Okay, thank you. The nuisance ordinance, uh, in our discussions last month, when we talked about the nuisance ordinance and we talked about the need for the revision, uh, the one thing that we wanted to give the council an opportunity to think about was how someone appeals that nuisance ordinance violation. Do they do it to a person or a government body? Will we set up a committee? We're going to decide exactly tonight. So at this point, I'm going to put this up for a short discussion on this, on what exactly do we need versus what direction do we want to give Mr. Stumpy to, the nuisance ordinance.
I think all abandoned houses are burned-down homes, being to be honest.
It is.
We've got twenty-seven pages of nuisance issues that are, we're around nine pages last time, twenty-seven. Even broken bottles and trash, furniture.
Overgrown.
Leaves.
Leaves, yes.
Look, the question is, is when the notice is given, who delivers the notice? Police chief, certified male, what we're going to follow there. If anyone wants to contest the issue or have the abatement contested, they need to file a request for a hearing within ten days of when they receive the notice of the nuisance itself. Who they deliver that to? We discussed last time. It's come to Jesse since he's the clerk. He's been there all the time, but also we have fifteen thousand things on Jesse's plate. We get fifteen thousand in one now. The third issue is, what's the nuisance period requested? Who they go in front of on the nuisance itself? Does the Green Hill, I'm sorry, as fast as I can talk, so I apologize. If I have to say it again, let me know. I'll, I'll do it again. Does the, does the hearing board, what would be the council itself? Will the council establish a committee that hears the nuisance issues? And then after that, it can be appealed again to the court level from whatever the first hearing decision comes from. So really, who, how do you want to deliver it? Who do they file their notice of appeal to? And then who sits on the board of the appeal with the nuisance issue? Are three things that I'm just lacking to plug into the works, right?
It makes sense that we're going to have a nuisance issue. I would think that the police department, if the person lives in town, in town, the police department will deliver the nuisance abatement to the resident. If there's a, if it's a renter-type of situation, uh, but if it's an abandoned building or something like that, then I think we send up, we find out who the owner is, and we send them, the police department will send them the same notice we registered them.
How many days do they have to comment?
They have ten days to request a hearing once the statement given. And if someone is a renter of a property, the notice can be either given to the tenant or the landlord. Both ways are effective under the state statute. Also, the ten-day timeframe can be extended, but there's only a part of ten days timeframe to request an hearing.
And the other part is, do we want them to, do we, do we just want to set up a committee with two aldermen and chief of police or marshal to be the nuisance review committee? Or do we want to send a committee board of all of them as a whole?
I think the board of aldermen should all be involved, because you don't know what board is going to be. It might be found at a certain point. You couldn't be showing them around.
So, kind of, kind of what a hearing is, the police take the nuisance letter to the renter and or mail it, and at that point, the board of, they have ten days to appeal it to the board of aldermen. If we get it, look at that ten, if we get the notice, we can always just call a special meeting to address that particular issue.
Do they give the request for hearing to the city clerk or...?
I think that would be the appropriate course of action, would be to send it to the city. All right, at this point, I will close discussion on this, and I will entertain a motion for the same. That way we can put it on the record as far as, that's how we want to do this.
Mayor, Mayor, could I ask you a question?
Yes, what?
Before you close, that, this ordinance is going to be twenty-seven pages. Did I hear that right?
It is right now.
What I want to know is how much the city attorney is charging for that, setting that ordinance up. That's all I want to know. I think the council should look at that.
Okay, and they do.
Why is it twenty-seven pages?
Because it has lots of definitions in it.
Every other city, every other city I've seen's got maybe a three-page ordinance.
The law changed and all this.
I don't think you need to go into every detail for what's a nuisance. I mean, common sense.
Well, thank you. With that, uh...
I make a motion to amend the ordinance for the permission of the value.
Okay. All right, we have a, this is a motion from Wayne, seconded by Marilyn. To input the language as we have discussed into the proposed ordinance. And at this point, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? That's a six to zero. Going on to the business is Don and Sherri Kendall. They're here. Okay, please come on up.
Well, I'm taking very much time. Pleasure to be here. My name's Don Kendall, my bribe, the boss is Sherri, and we're just here for the first responders, people of that nature. And we've been doing this for over thirty years in Europe. And of course, there are serious responders over there, all the way from England to Middle East. And what we're looking for, uh, these flyers here for you, uh, we kinda live in the area, so that's why we kinda come up here. And these are just brochures, kinda tell you who we are. Uh, we're just proud, I'll just read it to you, we're proud of the nice products specifically designed for first responders. Okay? And if your work includes, uh, firemen, EMS, police, security forces, uh, medical professionals, anything like that, governmental employees, also community, part of the program. We have a very low-cost term product. It's through the Officer Benefit Association, and we dealt with them for over thirty years in Europe. Okay? Uh, what we'd like to do is have this, and where others can go, I would say, police department, fire department, first responders, and who would I leave this with? Let me give you a brochure too. That's gracious. This is my wife's folder, it's not very lucky to have it. Want a couple of these? Well, more than one of these.
Please. Hey, somebody has some questions?
Sure, sure. Cost you a buck to join them, it's called the Officer Benefit Association. They've been around a long time. Uh, this is for your, uh, where they respond to. Uh, these are the cost factors in here. Okay? Too cheap. And also, there's an annuity off to the side of it. An annuity is nothing more than a safety instrument. This is a no-load fund, which means there's no commission paid on it. And so, do share responsibility to give you the best, the best choice, okay? We showed you the different interest rates analysis. You can put four thousand a year into it, and absolutely no commission. So, no load fund, okay? The term cost for, it can be as low as nineteen dollars a month, and that's good until age fifty, okay? After that, it goes up. What we try to do is, uh, make contact in the rural departments, Missouri, volunteer fire departments, which are in harm's way, uh, more so today than, you know, times. And, uh, this is an opportunity to give something that's very cost-effective, and, um, that can retain it. If the legal services required for firemen for the police department, they can take it with them. They can include the family with it. It's a very low-cost item. The annuity off to the side is currently claiming four percent. I don't know if I can get that in banks, okay? And it's average four point six, and it's an absolute no-load fund. By that, I mean, there's no charge, I don't give any money off of, so I'd say. And, uh, it's pre-tax dollars goes into it, I mean, tax dollars goes into it, so you're not taxed, you take it out. When you take it out, of course, you're gonna take capital gains on the interest accrued. If you're in a twenty percent tax bracket, you can actually add another percent to that number. So, you can end at around five and a half percent, something like that, okay? Limitations, four thousand a year. So, they're wanting to accept. Questions?
Uh, not that I can think of, but you get the business card here.
Yeah, she should be out here. She, that's the confident that we're taking it through. We've never been for over thirty years in Europe, and we handle everything from England all the way to, uh, the Middle East. Of course, there, the first responders were military, civil service, cultural touch areas, various instances, cultural touch areas, not a word, just food. Any questions? Nothing else to propose? All right. What's that? Well, I'm glad to be here. Well, you know, this will be a nationwide organization that we're setting up, including the sheriff. So, since you're in our available, we don't wanna come up here. You can get that out to the various entities. If you want more, we, we got it.
I will get this to the chief, and we'll have it go through the city hall.
And, and the fire department. And you have a group of first responders, I'm sure, in the community.
Oh, absolutely. And what we'll do is, uh, if anybody would like information on this, I'll keep a copy of it on the desk there at the dispatcher's area. I'll just post one of these flyers out in the foyer, uh, where if anybody needs, uh, additional information, they know exactly where to go to, and, uh...
It's individual, you under-reckon it's very loose underwriting. Uh, you could keep a hundred thousand. Uh, if you don't have HIV, you're not terminally ill, haven't had a felony in the past five years, we can take you. And they can add their family to it. You can end up, amount of forty, you can end up with a wife covered, children covered, you need to have a hundred thousand for around four thousand bucks.
That's real. Why is it cheap?
We depend on volume. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Sherri?
Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
I brought the heavy green case, but I don't think I need that.
We're always seeing phone calls for donations to the State Troopers Association or the Firemen's Association, and, you know, everybody is wanting donations, and so we figure if people are able to take care of it for themselves, then we won't be having to make donations. You know, that's, that's...
Main thing is it's portable, you can take it with you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, kids, have a good time.
I'm looking to address the next thing on the agenda with Sherri, County Chief, the East Library. Christina Muster will not be here. Uh, next person on the agenda is Mr. Telges, representing animal control.
Thank you. I'm here tonight, I'd like to draw the council attention to the fact that the city's being overrun with feral cats, and the council, I don't think, is doing anything at all about it. The city doesn't. Now, I've been, I've got a little eight-hundred feet of grass and trees, but it appears to be a magnet for wild critters right in the middle of town, and I've been trapping them for twenty-some years. I didn't used to have any problem getting rid of the animals. Clifty used to come and pick up the cats, take them out to the, uh, out to the, uh, pound out there, and he used to take the raccoons and the, and the possums. I never asked him what he did with those, so, uh, but it appears to me that lately, there's just so many cats, you can't believe it. Now, last week, I put out my traps, and in four days, I caught three cats, a raccoon and a possum. The cats, I had, I tried to take them to the city. They said, forget it, they won't take them. Now, what can I do with the cats? I can take them to Rawa, to the SPCA. Now, if I put my traps up, I can probably catch a cat every single night, which means if I drive them to Rawa, I'm gonna spend about, go about six hundred, five hundred miles a week, just taking cats to Rawa all the time. Now, I assume it's the responsibility of the city to take care of the problem of wild animals within the city, but apparently, you're doing nothing at all about the cats, and the, and the problem's getting worse all the time. They're all over the place, and these are feral cats. Believe me, I catch them. They're totally wild, completely wild. Now, there's people who are feeding them around town and making them healthy, and they're healthy cats, and healthy cats breed, and they're breeding more cats. And it's becoming a problem.
Now, John, I don't need to interrupt, but I do wanna clarify something, uh, or the one part that I do take exception to is, this council has actually presented legislation for the trap to return. It didn't pass, but there are council members actively working on that. Uh, so they are taking measures, and they are addressing, uh, these six people are addressing that, uh, just the way that that measure was written at the time. It didn't pass, it didn't, I believe, if I remember correctly, it didn't get a second motion, so it never went to a, a vote to pass it into an ordinance.
So, you just say cats are excluded from?
No, no, I'm talking about the, you had said that the city hasn't done anything about it, where I know that this body, this body here has done something. Under the, the way that the legislation was originally presented, it, it didn't pass.
Yeah.
Uh, so, those people went back to the growing board, and I believe two months ago, we're gonna present, uh, some different legislation, and their subject matter expert couldn't be here at that time, and, uh, hasn't rescheduled, as far as the kitten division.
Yeah, if we do anything like, can't you just tell them to start taking the cats out at the pound? So I can have someplace to take the cats? Now, my fault, let me harm the cats, say. That's, that's all there is to it. And they're dangerous, believe me.
Well, uh, is Mr. Forthman outside?
Yes.
Uh, Robbie, question about the pound.
Okay.
Is it set up to hold cats?
Um, no, we send our cats to kitten division. There's a few, uh, small cages down there, but we only hold them long enough till kitten division comes and gets them, or we take them to them.
Okay. Uh, so do we, do we have a procedure in place to deal with the cats?
We just call kitten division, and, um, they're located in St. Robert, between here and St. Robert.
St. Robert.
And that's, yeah.
Down by Nancy's.
Yeah, down by Nancy's. And that's where they go.
Is that Barbara Freeman?
I, nothing I couldn't tell you.
I think her first name is Barbara.
And kitten division is now telling us that they won't take them without an ordinance?
They need an ordinance, and they, they need money to, to work with.
Okay. Is there all, no, there are?
No.
Maybe something like that.
That's right.
I'm an ex-farmer, so I am not gonna take them out from the country and turn them loose, believe me. There's no way I'm gonna do that. I used to hate people that, that did that all the time. Now, I've been taking the possums and the raccoons out to the, uh, treatment plant, and we turn them loose out there. But knowing the little critters, they're gonna find their way back to my house, so they, they like it there, so. Now, I suspect Clifty used to eat them or use them for hunting, you know, or whatever. Clifty's possums never, never found their way back to my house.
Well, uh, I tell you, when it comes to the cats, uh, well, I would suggest with that is, uh, I'm by, I'm by far not the expert when it comes to dealing with cats. I haven't owned a cat in a very, very long time. Uh, as far as, uh, I think there's some subject matter experts in the community, let's get some input from, from them. If anybody would like to step up and offer an alternative as to how we can safely deal with those, uh, with the animals, please contact either the alderman, or city hall, or myself, and, uh, let's work on this and attack it, attack the problem as a key. You're, you're absolutely right, there, there are feral cats, uh, they do colonize to, to an degree, and with that, they're gonna break, they're gonna break through.
I appreciate you, you giving us time. I'd like to give you one more little word from somebody who built a other half of the library in about ninety days without any problem. You can solve a lot of your problems there if you just appoint a couple of free, good people on a library board, give them the money, and turn them loose, and let them get the job done, and get it out of your hair.
Well, and quite, quite honestly, John, that is, that is an option that this, that the council can do. Uh, when the library board was set up a few, when it was active a few years ago, uh, I believe the issue was they ran into term limits with people.
Well, you got some people available, and...
Uh, but I think that's worth revisiting now to, uh, put the administration of the library over to the library board instead of hitfalling back on the board altogether. Uh, so that's something I'll actually, uh, probably getting with you, John, first part of next week, to get, uh, some information on, a little bit, thank you. Uh, Mr. McNulty?
Oh, yeah. How we doing? Pretty good. Um, I wanna thank you all for your speedy, uh, decision on my property issue. Uh, it seems like there's some sort of confusion though, on what it's gonna take to get anything in writing.
Well, I think what we're looking for, right, is the, the description, legal description of your property.
I gave it to you on the, it's on the plaque.
It's on, and...
I hear you guys, the, one of the plaques, and that's the legal description on there.
Okay. Uh, and that's maybe where I was confused.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll own that one.
Well, I don't own that to own it, I just like to get moving on, you know?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, so what we'll do is, uh, I'll pull up the plaque, I'll get it to him, so he can write it up. And we'll get it to him.
Awesome, I appreciate it.
No, not a problem, thank you.
That's it, man. Thank you guys for your work, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. We have, next thing on the agenda is we have several business licenses to approve or disapprove. I will refund all, and then, at that point, we'll turn around, and it's more in total. And we'll go from there. Uh, and we'll go on each one of them individually. First one is Johnson's Snack Yet. Uh, for those of you that, uh, don't know, the Shepherd's Snack Yet has sold to the Johnson family. Johnson family is presenting, uh, for a property license. And everything appears to be there. The next one is a retail-type business, Cindy's Country Creations. Business location is 307 West 63. Looks like, uh, everything's been paid. Dixon Auto Supply. Legal name, Angels Mentals LLC, DEA at Dixon Auto. Looks like everything is over there. Last one, Star Construction LLC. They are a big construction company, business location is 606 South Elm and Dixon. Their mailing address is out of Nashville, Tennessee. Looks like everything is in proper order there. Is there any questions about these business licenses? At this point, uh, we'll need a motion, an alert and a motion for Johnson's Snack Yet to approve this.
On the motion.
To approve this. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Telges to approve Johnson's Snack Yet. Who was the second?
I seconded.
Okay. And if he seconded, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This passes six, zero. Okay, sign now, Mr. Plummer will come up, sign. Next one is...
Next one is Cindy's Country Creations. At this point, if there's no questions about this, uh, we will, I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay, at the other end, motion by Marilyn, seconded by Wayne. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This passes six, zero. Dixon Auto Supply. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove. The old dollar general. Okay, Councilman Watson makes a motion to approve, Representative, Mr. Watson, you're approving, correct? Okay, motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Tilges. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This passes six, zero. Star Construction LLC. If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove. It gives the mailing address of sixty-six twenty-one, Asheville High, Asheville Highway in Oxford, Tennessee. Person to contact is Melissa May, here at Dixon. It's eight six five, excuse me. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove. Okay, the motions are approved by Marilyn, can we have a second? At this point, we have a motion to approve Star Construction LLC. Do we have a second? We have, we have a second on the motion for approval. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any, any opposed? Raise your hand.
I got a question about it, because I can ask it. Are they gonna be working out?
Dixon. It's a construction company. What's that? At this point, we have, uh, two motions to approve. Let's try this again. Motion to approve, please raise your hand. To disapprove, okay, this passes six. That is all of the business licenses. The next thing we have to do is Chief Brinkley, come up here. Chief Brinkley is requesting to go to a Missouri Police Chiefs Association Conference. Chief, can you tell us a little bit about conference?
This is a, uh, this, this is the annual conference where they decide the delegates who vote on the state of Missouri delegates. Uh, it's also the legal updates on all the new continued education requirements for law enforcement after all the Ferguson incidents, et cetera, et cetera.
And this will require you to be, when is the conference here? December sixth through December the ninth. That capital Plaza Hotel Convention Center in Jefferson City. Uh, full delegate registration is two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and in the back is the itinerary of events. His motel costs sixty-six per night, times four nights, two hundred and sixty-four dollars in addition to the, uh, two hundred and fifty dollar delegate registration. Uh, do any council members have any questions about this?
Is that two hours drive, and a day's time?
I believe so.
You do? Because every time I go up there, I drive home at night, and spend that kind of money.
Well, there's also Cheryl Max, where there's my, uh, the name of the, the board back with, and, uh, delegation that could be there.
Are there any other questions about this? If any of the council members sit there or not, I'll entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove in whole or in part.
I'm making a motion to approve in whole. Uh, Karen Brinkley, she's a Kansas City Police Chief Association.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Tillings to approve in whole, uh, the police, for the registration of the events as well as the accommodations. Uh, do we have a second at this time?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Doyle. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Can't abstain. Okay. All right, so this does pass five to one, uh, with, uh, Mr. Brandt dissenting on your opinion. The next thing we got is report from standing committees. Uh, Mr. Tammer, now through this, Councilman Tillages, uh, on your big truck board as reviewed, uh, do you have anything to report to the council at this time?
No, sir, I'm not gonna move.
Okay.
Everything must be all right, I have no complaints.
Thank you. Uh, Street Lawyer Sewer, uh, Councilman Watson.
Over there, a couple. A few. Over there on Country Club Road, uh, there's a Donna Herb, who brought it up last month. She, her neighbor had an issue with parking. Couldn't pull up in there, they paved the road, she couldn't help but pull up in there. I've been talking with her just in the last week or so, no problems coming up with the mailman, cannot deliver the mail, can't pull up in there for mail logs. She'd not be getting, neighbor not be getting her mail. And, uh, we talked about how to fix that, and neighbor below her, they put in his own cove, white tuck, and covered it. Turned out to work pretty neat for him. And talking with the neighbor, and then it feels that the city needs to fix the problem. She's having it covered.
Are they wanting similar, uh, are they want, are they wanting us to fill in the, put a covert pipe in and they cover the chat as well?
Yeah, I would like to see the neighbor done. And actually, I'll, actually, I told her to get them to do that, but it's narrow, closer you get to where the hill, hill, and, uh, we probably don't want to go, so, uh, we talked about, they put the, cut that up from Donna's herb, so it stops.
Okay.
Yeah.
It goes straight down to Ellen Street?
And there's, there's, at least they can pull off a few cars and get to it.
Okay. When your committee met, what was the recommendation of your committee on this issue?
Now, our mission again was let's go ahead and fix the pipe and cover it. That way, since we placed park, and now since then, the issue of the mailman can't pull up in there, so now you get the mail, and Donna's, uh, has an issue now, where she's dragging, uh, getting across in her ride, so, um, our mission is going to fix that.
Yes. At this point, we, uh, for this particular line, I don't know, we do have any recommendation from the streets, uh, on our sewer committee. Uh, at this point, um, I'll entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove the recommendation from the committee.
I'm making a motion. Is everyone on scene? Is everyone that I want to see?
Rithid.
I'm on scene. Our personal scene.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion that we, we approve that, that.
And we have a motion to approve from Council Hall, seconded, Councilman Brandt, uh, to approve this recommendation. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This passes six, zero. Uh, all get with, Jesse, so we can get some direction to Robbie. Uh, I'll be back with what we need done. We may have to pull in John a little bit on this.
We got a couple.
Sure, go right there.
Got another issue down, hill, from, uh, corner of Sixth and Hill, there, down towards the water, Creek and Flint, so you'll see shit. Drain issue right there, there's, that's where no drains on the right side.
Sure.
Okay. From there, Alexander Corner, first thing I saw was where the Alexander Corner is, it needs to be dug out. If you go over and look at it, you can tell where it, it used to be, and now it's all covered, or y'all are now, it's become the issue. And closer to the creek down here, yeah, winter time it's running across the road, portion of rock out of driveways. And I think it's something that maybe we need to look into, let the contractor come in here and do it, that's just my opinion, because it's gonna take more than all the dollars.
Is that by your business ownership?
Well, that's...
Across the street?
That doesn't help, it, it, every time they run.
I say, though, is that, is that what you're talking about, you're by your business?
Yeah. I mean, there's a big issue right there, and I think there's several of them that are down, but that, they're saying to channel. In winter time, it's a mess, where buses try to hit the terminal, get up through that, on the high.
Is that all cities' business? Is that all the cities?
Yeah, especially from our six.
Home owners.
That, that would be all six.
That's all six. There's some coves in there that are very, so built up over the years.
No, it's just, it's filled up, and water is raw, dirt, everything, and washed down, it's just filled, naturally filled, that ditch in.
And then when it freezes, it crosses, it freezes, winter time, it kind of melts, freezes, it's slick.
Okay.
You know, so I mean, it's, it's an issue, it's gotten worse, it's gonna get worse, I think. I think we need to look and maybe have the contractor come in and do it. Not saying that we can't do it, but it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be probably, gonna have a right to it.
So you're, so you're not talking, it's not just a simple dip out ditches and we're, we're good?
It needs to be cut up, needs a ditch cut out in there, needs, needs road very, very deep, to do it right, in my opinion.
Okay, is that also the opinion of your committee at this time?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe you can check into, if you get a quote and see, and do that first.
I, I think, uh, at this point, the prudent measure would be to, uh, get some quotes as far as, uh, what it's gonna take to fix it, uh, and get some experts on it, and then at that point, uh, we'll figure out what the next step is as far as getting it fixed, as far as approving, if we need to approve it or if we don't.
And along with, uh, the cove issue on that Sixth, comes the factor of the bottom of the hill, it dug that ditch out, or for the drain, it's a complete draw, and the pavement is dipped, and the only way, uh, to fix that, in my opinion, is to be able to, up to that next driveway, to the next house. A question came out of the meeting the other night, as to, there was one citizen, guy's driveway, well, and went across the road, didn't, well, I meant looked, around town, and read there's a, a asphalt apron put on that, into the citizen's driveway, it was a ten inch drop, off pavement, whereas down at the bottom of the hill, it's two to three inches drop. And I talked to the citizen that lived right there, that said that the driveway did wash out, and he said that they was gonna come back and finish all that, but they still haven't come up through there with the chat, and lying in sides of the road, so, in between here and there, he's had a little bit of frustration with his driveway.
Sure.
The driveway above it, the one that got the, the apron put on it, it was an asphalt driveway, they tore it out, they replaced it, I think they fixed it, because it was an asphalt driveway to begin with. But down there, in that one particular drive, there was a swag about twenty, twenty-five feet long. Swag is a different road. What they didn't come through there, and they had to lay the asphalt that thick in order to get it in there, eight or ten inches, so they had to put an approach to the driveway. So that's reason why, and all over town, there's a few places in our town that same thing, just to verify that, if that's not clear enough, they would give it to John Doe.
And that is the one that was Selena Doe, is that the one you're talking about now? Because there's some people that are really upset over that one, with Selena Doe, and theirs are not.
I don't know about you. So, sorry, if you have any comments there about them. Oh, goodness, when you look at it. Now, we got a water issue, a couple. The James Stancil, they're at a water bill, uh, averages twenty-three, four hundred dollars. And, uh, I believe the month before, it was two something, two something, about over eight hundred dollars, and, uh, she had a question about it, went over two different times, looked at the meter, didn't see that leaking, she took her, her management man, they walked through the whole place, didn't find anything, but, uh, she, she doesn't feel she, she paid that eight hundred dollar, but she went in and paid over half of it. And when first talked about it, the meter that's in there, we heard since nineteen eighty-five, it's an annual meter, possibly misread it, I don't know. But, it's been two months, I think, now, and, uh, I don't know where that she is, it's just, she, she paid over half of it, she'd be just fine to let the rest of it go and move on.
Okay, so, uh, just on accurate, the recommendation, the recommendation from your committee, uh, at this point, uh, for the outstanding balance of Jaden Estates is to forgive that amount, is that, is that accurate?
Remedy amount to, it's both gonna be there, and it was ordered for the end, and it still hasn't been handled.
Why not?
And they haven't been metered.
Why hasn't been, why hasn't been, why hasn't been, why hasn't this been addressed?
Mr. Forthman? The meter over at Jaden Estates, uh, we were just discussing if it's an older meter, is that accurate?
It is an older meter, uh, there's nothing wrong with the meter, I think they've been reading it wrong for a long time, and then finally we started... and then finally, we've started, they've started reading it right. We do have the new one to replace it, but it's in concrete. We're going to have to jackhammer that concrete away to put the new electric probe reader in it. But right now, they have to get down in there and wipe it off and read it, and that's the way they've been doing it lately. And it's getting a more accurate read now, is what it is.
So, if there's nothing wrong with it, there will be no need to change it?
Well, we're just changing it to put the electric probe on it. John bought new, bigger meters with electric probes, so we can get them all changed to the probe reads, so it's more feasible for the city to do, just walk by and do it, instead of having to pump the water out of the pit every time. Because you do have to take the pump, and the pit's a pretty good size. It's big enough for me and Councilman Doyle, Councilman Watson, all to get down in there together. So, and they have to pump all that water out, so they can get to the glass to read it. So, it will be better in the long run, once we get that done. But like I said, we got to jackhammer all the concrete away from the meter, because when they poured it, when they set the meter set in there, they just poured concrete in, and it just all the way up to the bottom of it. We're going to have to jackhammer all that out.
So, you don't think that there was a leak, someone left their water running, someone had a toilet running, that would?
That could do it.
And on such a bill?
That, that could raise the bill. Yes, that could raise the bill, but if we don't, I mean, the leak detector's not moving right now. On each meter, there's a little star, which will spin if there's a leak, or if somebody's using water. And that's very well possible, they could have left a hose on or anything, but we can't, we don't know that, I mean, and who's going to be honest about it? I mean, would you rather get somebody to knock three hundred dollars off your bill, or say you out, they left a meter on?
If they have a lead, if they have a true lead?
That was very well possible, and it could, a toilet hanging, sometimes, you know, your toilet guts get, and that will raise it too a little bit. Yes, it will.
Was this the water most bill?
Yeah. For us, probably.
Everything else, like before, never?
This time is to.
I have a little bit of question. What, Paul will say about this, our water leak? Do you know?
I don't know.
I've talked to you two different times. First time, we talked about reading the meter wrong, which showed me that it can be messed up, and can't have the real. Check on my doctor, it was, they got that, you know, so, I don't know, don't think she knows.
Well, in fairness to Paula, she can't wait, anything that has to come from this body. And that's, that's why we're addressing it tonight.
I can't tell you a hundred percent which way, other than possibly, if you had different people reading it, it's ready to roll.
But it was back to normal this month, yeah.
Come back to normal.
Whatever it was, was, you know, a little toilet hole, something, probably a toilet hole.
Or that is ready to roll.
For a long time, and now I've got to call it up, and call that, actually, maybe they're going to send a deal. I don't know. Just take a sample, pour water on top. He got it, he's on, you know, every month, every day.
So, we have a recommendation from the committee to forego or forgive the outstanding balance of that, of that water bill from your committee, and the other option is to table it and ask Paula to come and explain the bill to the councilman as well.
Just make a motion to forgive it.
Okay, we have a motion to forgive the bill from Councilman Grant, and we have a second. Seconded by Councilman Doyle. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This passes four two, with Councilman Tilges, Councilman Biggum Woffen dissenting in the opinion. Next time.
I got Gene Debets sitting on thirty-sixth street, and one of them, they're going to be able to get their yard done fixed.
I spoke with Mr. Hostwater Daddy, and our skidster will be back in the morning, he said. And tomorrow afternoon, or Wednesday morning, I will try to get somebody over there.
I'll refer him in, if he could call ahead of time, so he can explain what's going on, so they explain to you what it is taking.
I will go by in the morning, they should be there in the morning, shouldn't they, Paul?
Yeah, they should be, probably there until ten o'clock.
I will swing by their house in the morning.
Do you have anything else you want to say? Okay, dangerous animal committee, Mr. Grant, do you have anything to report at this time?
Just Jesse, Miss Phil.
I'll put it asleep. Okay.
And, I do, I have had several complaints about cat situation downtown square.
Yeah, that, right there.
They are being fed daily, and they are getting out of here. It's amazing, they're not, but you know, it's about here, who's paying none of what's creating problems? It's attracting kind of awesome skunks, and wild cats in the country.
Yeah. So, let's put, let's put our collective heads together and find a solution for the cat problem. Mr. Grant, thank you. Mr. Forthman, you're up for the main report.
There's three big raccoons that live up here in this one, big.
We got one.
I'm scared they'll carry me off by the.
There's never been a fifty cats in the building.
Yes, there is, the metal building behind Goodrich.
No, I'm talking about in the residential building, that there's some feed. There's at least fifty in there.
No cats. There are a lot, do you think?
Yeah, there is, and also, he feeds them over cases too.
But there are a lot living in that building.
How are these buildings up there, it's got probably twenty or thirty of them under you?
Yeah, it is a problem, it really is. We, we do our daily routines, our monthly routines. We built an office up here, so I can, like, if you guys need to come up there and talk to me, we can get behind closed doors, or if I need to talk to an employee, or if they need to talk. We've put in a couple driveway pipes. We've been cleaning leaves at the Lions Park this week. We had a lady come up to us and ask if we can mulch them up. Just run over them a long more bunch of times, that's, unless you have a mulching kit on that lawnmower, really don't really good. It's just going to sit there and rot. The best thing, I think, is to burn them, like we can do. When you burn them, that ash creates nitrogen, it goes back into the ground, and that grass will come back greener next year. I mean, if you guys would rather we do something different, we can entertain it and see what we can do about it. But right now, we just don't have a mulching kit or anything on the lawnmowers, so. The mowing and the weeding of the parks is still going, I know it's November, but it's still growing. I'm about ready for cold weather, too. Been grading some alleyways and some access roads, that's pretty much an ongoing thing. Every time we get them up in pretty good shape, it rains and it works not again. The lift stations, we had some complaints about the lift stations not being addressed properly, so me and Mayor Wellington has appointed somebody that, that's his job in the mornings, is to go, and he goes through the lift stations and measure, or takes the readings off of them and makes sure everything's working properly and everything's functioning. So, Ernie Mentola is the one doing that right now. He is also in charge, once a month, him and a person with a CDO will take the jet truck out, and they take it around, they hose them down, because they get grease filled up on the sides of the walls. They will hose that down and clean them out, to make sure they have a longer life. We have a water leak across the road from Tri-County, in front of Dirky Insurance, it was a midnight deal.
We figured you guys were there until about four AM.
Yeah, we was there till four o'clock, we got called in at ten, and we had to wait two hours before we can dig, with an emergency dig rig, so. Yeah, we was there till four o'clock getting it fixed, but we got it patched up, and got the road patched back, and it's another deal.
Have you taken out the, this cones?
Yes.
Because they've been there for a long time.
Yeah, I will, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to sink down. That's, I had my car to pull in there, and it to fall outside, and we want to make sure it was dried up firm. It's, it pegged over and everything, well, we put our patch in there, best we could.
Now, also, you guys cleared out a sewer pipe over at Rose on Red Bud and Hill. Correct, and that was, that was actually causing a backup. And how's that work? Since you cleared it out, how's that working now?
I haven't got phone calls, have you got any phone calls over the phone? I, I assume it's open and flowing good. There is a pipe, we call it Cleanout, that runs from Mr. Campbell's driveway, Jason Campbell's driveway. And it's got water standing in it, we run our jet truck all the way down to the other manhole, which is about thirty foot deep, there at the intersection of Red Bud and Hill. And we never hit anything, but there's still about a half pipe of water on there, I don't know if there's just not a lot of water in the pipe, or what the deal is, but we never hit anything, we run our jet truck all the way through there. So, I, it's not any backups or anything, everything's still flowing good, so I don't know what it is. We cleaned some limbs out of the park, the Lions Park, done some popple patching. I sent a couple around to locate all the water valves we have, that Willard covered some up. We have a mark on the road, so they can come back through, and I think they're going to wait until spring to come back and unbury them, unless we get it done now, for some reason, to get in there. But we marked them all with blue paint, and rubbed down where they were located, and exercised them. Which means they pop the lid off, and close it down, and open it back up, this keeps it functional. I had somebody go around and clean all the wellhouses out, all the spider webs and stuff out, sweep them all out, make them nice, just in case we could have an inspection anytime soon. Shop cleaning and vehicle cleaning, like I said, the alternator on Bobcat went out, so we had the Rodney House call, took it and fixed it, and it should be back tomorrow, except I told them that it's supposed to be back tomorrow. I sent a guy down to Shepherd Park to start on the creek banks, cleaning them out, knocking down some of the brush and stuff, and it's looking pretty good. Sprayed down the lift stations, exercising the water main valves and stuff, fire hydrant flushing, they've been going around to the fire hydrants and flushing them, and getting, exercising them. We're going to start getting ready for the winter operations, you know, we got to get our bed out, and make sure it's good, functional, and everything's working properly. The truck deal with Mike Benz, we talked to him last week, and he said, call him first part of this week. I tried to contact him today, and he did not get back with me. So, I will try again tomorrow and see exactly where we are with them on receiving, or what we need to do. And he's got all the information he needs, to my knowledge, so we're just waiting on that. We also, the mayor brought it to my attention that October is Fire Safety Awareness Month. So, I went to Tri-County Lumber and ordered new fire alarms for every city, city building we have. We're just going to replace everything we have, to make sure they're up to code, where they need to be. And then, like, the building I'm in, which is the fire department, the old fire department, has not one fire alarm in it. So, it's going to happen.
And, and I believe the delay on that, putting them up, was they, they had to do a special order?
They had a special order, they'll be in tomorrow, I believe, is when the jet truck moved in. So, we should be able to start that tomorrow afternoon, or do the same one. That's all I have.
Behind the Higgy's property, it's on the city property, there's limbs that are hanging over, and need to be cut down, and also that culvert needs to be cleaned out. Looks like the other side of the road, the things that weren't done.
Where's the Higgy's property at, these days?
I, where Shepherd Drive, and it's that, go up the back, back road.
Okay, okay. I'm back, I need to be up.
Okay. So, we got a lead rub, thank you.
Yep.
We are going to regress, so Mr. Watson can cover some things that he has missed, and his committee report.
Two things, we got some culverts turned down, that hold them, and it's popped in, that's the end, which is a limb that traveled, filled up. The homeowner, our orders, I believe, are in check, I don't have them done yet. The snow, for a replacement, culvert, got holes popped in, or something, season, take care of it before or after, or for.
Before or after what?
Before the ordinance gets repaired, we have the ordinance, everybody now, he's got, he's stored vanilla up, five wouldn't be prepared by, so.
Rob, what's our business practice on that?
If it needs a new culvert pipe, and it's the, if it's like a driveway pipe or something, the homeowner buys the pipe and we put it in. We've never repaired them before, or anything like that. But it's, that's, to my knowledge, that's all we've ever done, was if, if it needs a new pipe, if it's got holes in it, or rusted out, or anything, the homeowner purchases the pipe and we put it in.
Now, my next one is the lawn trail up there, since Willard was over here. I had some questions about maintenance on here.
In which park?
The lawn trail in the park.
Oh, Lions Park?
Lions Park right there, and, and I did go over and look at it, it does have some cracks. And it is going to turn white and tall, and talking to people, I ain't exactly sure how long it's been there, they thought that it only did maintenance one time, since it's been put in. Maintenance, I guess, I'm assuming, that they're talking about filling the cracks with sealing. So, I called Willard and asked them if they could give me a full, what it cost to seal it, and for it to replace it, just to get a broader picture. And then I went and seen what it was going to cost for us to do it ourselves. And I knew the guys' deal, what they quoted me was to fill a crack, apply the coat, tar it, and also sealer. What they had to do, it takes one day, three thousand dollars. If we have to replace it, an overlay, a blank overlay, is seventeen thousand. So, I went to Lowe's and talked to other representatives or associates there, to find the operator to take to seal that ourselves. It's a quarter mile long, ten foot wide track. the operator tag to seal that ourselves. It's a quarter mile long, ten foot wide track. Four or five gallons left. So they got different years. They got six years, seven years, and ten years. So I got a twenty-four year and eight year or ten year. And for the six year, for the crack sealer and four, five gallon per pedal and sealer, uh, and then, uh, the burials, the squeaks, put on with it, about three hundred and fifty dollars. For a ten year, uh, to do that, looking at about four hundred dollars. So, and I had some people concerned about the track. And I did look at it. I feel like it does need something done.
I didn't know we looked at it also. We should have already made a follow-up. Right? We need it. People love it. They use it.
Rob, with, with your group of guys, if we got the materials, uh, Paul, you're saying around five hundred dollars worth of materials?
Might take a little more, might take a little less.
How fast, how fast can we get, uh?
Well, we'll have to put in paper to show that we're going to shut the trap down, the walking trail down. Uh, I mean, I don't know if we need to give them a notice because people plan that, you know, I'm going to go walk on this night and this night and this night. But, I mean, I guess we could go order it and we'll have to get a broom and broom everything off and prep it before, uh, John said it takes like a five thousand dollar broom to prep it, which we...
Well, you need a street sweeper or something because they're not, a push broom's not going to prep the asphalt. You need something to scrub it really good. I mean, they, they spend, they're going to spend half the day brooming to get the surface ready to take the seal.
Will the sweet room work out?
That'd work.
Will, will that suffice, John?
Yeah, that would work.
Okay. Uh, so I guess the next question that I've got, Mr. Watson, what is your committee's recommendation to the council at this time for that, to solve that issue?
Well, I don't know. Robbie has something I think we can do, Ken. Pretty simple.
Sure, we'll give it a shot.
Okay. Say, probably what the sheriff would need, and get it down. Probably get it number one.
We could just put some signs up, you know, a couple of signs around the road.
As long as, uh, uh, our guys are doing it, it's not considered any biddable, I believe. Uh, so we don't need to do any kind of notice or advisement like that. At this point, I will admit, in a tenet motion to approve, disapprove the committee's recommendations to, uh, seal the sidewalk for the walking path at Mike's Park.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Telsus. Do we have a second?
Yes. Paul.
Paul.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? This passes six zero. All the committee's recommendation. Uh, any more out, Mr. Paul?
Mayor, I got one quick deal.
Yes, please.
On my property issue.
Yeah.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at?
Once we get to the property description, what kind of timeframe?
It shouldn't take me any time to do it at all. If it's coming out tomorrow, I have court here tomorrow and court, you guys say Wednesday, so we're the team. So two or three days once I get it.
Okay.
And then at that point, do I have to? If you can, uh, give me your contact information so I can keep in touch with you on specifically where we're at with it.
Okay.
And...
I think I got your cell phone at the house. I'll just, I'll shoot you a text or something, give you my number.
Okay, sounds perfect.
All right, I appreciate it, guys.
Not a problem. Thank you. Uh, the next person we have on the agenda is Chief Frankel. Uh, Chief, come on down.
Of course, I forgot.
Before I go into the numbers, I have a, uh, another training request. That's for Officer Sinner. Uh, if it wasn't turned in, that would have to be paid up for at this point. So that's why I just want it turned in at the time. This is for December fourteenth to fifteenth in Columbia. Uh, this is certified Officer Sinner from Evidence Custodian, uh, through the International Association of Property and Evidence. This is one time, you only test this course one time a year.
I'm ready.
Uh, we are, a year ago, we were supposed to get audited after, uh, a search warrant. Does that feel, that did not happen. Uh, so therefore, Ohio Patrol just kind of washed their hands of that. So therefore, we have like lots of property evidence citizens in here. The proper way to handle that would be with somebody that's certified and, uh, blessed off on their credentials of handling all of it. Um, so...
This is separate from the six hundred?
Yes, it's a different train, for different... This is for Officer Sinner.
I know. The other one was for Paul. I didn't get it last night.
What was just talked about? One, I believe they're referring to...
All with Data Master Type Two, uh, the alcohol program. But we have, we have that now. Uh, now, training is, training's mandated by the state. We, the city is required to provide training. We are required to provide fifteen hundred dollars per officer per year. We don't have a choice with that. Therefore, we have a ten thousand in our training budget for that. We have a four thousand in our lodging budget for that. The, the money is there for the training. It's a matter, as we spoke before on the ordinance, the way the person, I mean, where he's getting prior approval or the officer pays for it out of pocket and then asks for reimbursement. Um, so that's simply our part. Briefing and request him the way they are.
Now, if Officer Sinner attends this training, it is my understanding, he will become the Evidence Custodian for the police department.
Correct. And, and this is a step program, a step process. I mean, just because he goes to this two-day course, does a lesson. He must attend this two-day course, be an Evidence Custodian for a year, and then he takes a test. At that time, the International Association of Property Evidence out of California gives him his certification. Uh, I have the same credentials. Uh, however, it, ten years ago, I believe. But this covers everything, packaging, processing, logging, crime labs, uh, air.
How much does it cost, Eric?
Uh, top of my head, I believe, three seventy-five. It's on the bottom of that front page, bottom left, I think it said new building.
Is that just the class?
Yes.
Is he used to go require lodging?
Pardon me?
Is he required lodging?
Yes, two nights. And that's listed on there as well.
I believe I seen on that the lodging is rated at ninety-nine dollars per night.
If we get it by the thirteenth.
At this point, are there, does anybody have any questions for the chief in regards to?
After he does all the training, everything, gets everything set up in a Dixon Police Department, I think he still have time, will he still be a Dixon policeman at part-time?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. That, that's one of the additional duties.
Okay.
They all have, uh, they all have different assigned additional duties, whether, like, we have a Type Two who's in charge of the breath alcohol program. Uh, we have an officer who's in charge of the Kins program, Xavier Stewart.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no other questions on this, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove, uh, Officer Sinner going to this training. The motion, Councilman Watson, to approve or disapprove. Okay, to approve, Senator Sinner, Officer Sinner, to the Evidence Class. After we have a second. We have a second, Councilman Telsus. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Interfomer, this passes six oh. Uh, Chief, what else you got?
Um, were you wanting to discuss the boarding account over here, discuss what we mark the municipal chair, or were you wanting to do that something?
As far as the, uh, Sheriff's Retirement Fund?
That, the, just, uh, creating a back up for the boarding.
Yes, yes. Um, with the, what they have, uh, when they get money coming in, uh, such as for tickets, uh, uh, et cetera, whatever they have come in, they, right now, they don't have a, an account. Everything goes into a general account, which their budget is so much that they don't ever see that money until the following year, and then their only budget is so much more, uh, a year. Same way with the, with the upkeep inmates. Whatever money comes in, still goes into a jail account, and they don't see that until the following year. I think what Chief Regal is asking is, uh, for the council to approve in a separate account for just the police department, where that money would go into there, and that's just say if they've got money in there now, if they need, uh, a new light bar, or they need, uh, sarin or whatever goes to that car, instead of, um, pull down the budget, they have that money in that account that they can, uh, actually go in and, uh, get that. If you go to other, uh, counties, such as Kalaski, uh, Dick Crocker has the same thing in, uh, Vienna, they all have, uh, a police account where they go in and draw it out and have it for, they call it like a surplus account.
Well, and, and it's correct. This has nothing to do with traffic saturation, this is reading. This is prisoner upkeep.
Okay, great.
Um, and just kind of to break it down. An example is holding city prisoners. Um, and I'm just going to use a fresh example. We have an in, an individual right now who was sentenced to ninety days in jail. Ninety days in jail, thirty-five dollars a day is quite a bit of money. That money sets into court fund. It cannot be transferred to us at this time because we don't get money. So that comes out of the police budget instead of court budget, where we feed them, we house them, we take wages for them, et cetera, et cetera. Same thing for the sheriff's inmates. We get a check in, that check goes into general revenue, not to the police department. So therefore, advise media, if you're fond of wars, pains, see them up for the track, whatever it might be, it's never goes back into us. So we researched that. We called Missouri Municipal League, we spoke to the sheriff, et cetera, et cetera. Sheriff has, it's ma, for them, it's mandated by the state. Um, he has what is called the Sheriff's Restitution Fund, where if he's on an inmate or green county, Phelps County, whoever, those checks go into that fund. He pulls from that fund, he buys vehicles, he does whatever. Um, what we're looking at is there are several upgrades to the jail that we need to make for safety and security reasons. However, we would be hard pressed to pull that from the budget, whereas we can pool that money from the checks that come from the Sheriff's Department or from the city, like we have eight thousand dollars budgeted for city inmates that we don't get. Uh, that just goes into the next year's revenue. Uh, so the recommendation from the Missouri Municipal League was to create an account, have it labeled, has to be approved by the maintenance. Uh, takes two signatures to do anything with, uh, and we would treat it just as normal for the council.
Now, I will advise council that, uh, should you all decide to create such an account, uh, an order for Chief Frankel to be on that account, uh, we would need to go ahead and get him bonded as far as, uh, who, like myself, Jesse, Paul, and a few of, a few of the others.
Yeah.
Paul.
Fort clerk.
And Fort clerk, they're, they're all bonded officials to me. Uh, we would just need to do the same thing for him and, uh, what's, is there, is there a P associated with that?
I don't know.
Okay. There wouldn't, I presume there wouldn't be a P associated with it, but, uh, it's a formality.
It's going to be part of, well, like, or the police department, taking out that budget now. Where, where will this money come from? If we don't have it coming in, then we can't budget that much, right?
This is money that comes in.
That's what I'm saying. But right now, we're putting that in as a general revenue and then budgeting out of the general revenue for the police department.
For a year later.
The money that comes in, so you, what you're saying is the money that comes into this will be appropriated. Uh, that money won't be used until the following year. Is that right?
No, sir.
Okay.
He's asking the way it's operating now. In other words...
The way it's operating now is, as we're...
We just...
It goes into general revenue, and it would actually go into our treasurer account at the bank instead of this account. Uh, we would essentially be moving those funds from the treasurer account, moving the deposits of those funds from the treasurer account to this account that he's requesting.
But I'm wanting to know if that's going to be a part of... But I'm wanting to know if that's going to be a part of what was in the budget? Or is this just going to be extra money, a slosh of money? Then we're not going to be getting into the city treasury what we had already budgeted? If you take that money and put it into a different account?
I'm, I'm sorry, that question I'll have to defer to Jesse on, specifically how.
What originally happened, that was a previous council. We had annual money that was coming contracted with the Sheriff's Department, for X amount of prison. That was designated for the wages and salaries of the displaced. The previous council voted that when we lost that contract, they were not dismissing those employees. We budgeted the money to pay their salaries. So therefore, that money became excess, we budgeted, it came in under budget on salaries. We allocate a budget fund for prisoner upkeep, the city addiction does, that puts into the police fund. We never get that back, because it goes in for next year's revenue. That buys media's landlord's whatever. For instance, this year's, I think we have twenty thousand in prisoner upkeep. That came out of city funds to maintain prisoners. Those checks come in, it's, it's, it's a matter of moving, is what it is. We, we can't, I don't even know how to explain it. In other words, that check from the sheriff, I get whenever, gets put into the bank for next year.
If you're going to give us a budget next year, that money will be useful, that budget?
Correct.
On the basis of that.
What we're saying, to, to do.
You want the money back, is what you're saying.
No, what I'm saying, to do the projects that the restitution fund is for. That, that's what prisoner boarding is for. You have to have that fund. I mean, safety and security for the jail. We planned, we talked, this, that, and the other. How do you budget that into a prisoner upkeep? That needs to be in the restitution fund, that's the way it's explained to us from the Municipal League. Prisoner upkeep is a whole different ballgame than the restitution fund that you recruit. Does that make sense?
The money's still coming, it's still being utilized for the budget. What you're saying is this just needs to be earmarked to do.
Correct. And we, and we're eating money, is what we're doing. For instance, it's against the law, like this guy's sitting in jail for ninety days. He doesn't pay that bill. When he's court ordered to sit in jail, we eat that bill. Okay, well, that's thousand-plus dollars that we're eating, that we never, we never see, because we cannot move that eight thousand dollars that you guys budgeted. In the court budget, does not get transferred, it never, never even moves. They don't spend it, it never moves, it's sitting in the court budget. Our money from last year is still there, because we cannot move that. We cannot add to the budget, so therefore, you have to add it to a restitution fund that can be revolving. It's way in the Municipal League's front of the desk.
Maybe we can get some information from them, something to look at or read.
Yeah, who's going to oversee it now? That's my next question.
Is that a point of understanding?
And I might, and it might be my explanation. At the beginning of October, we budgeted eight thousand dollars into the court budget for prisoner upkeep, for boarding. For when the judge orders somebody to jail, there's eight thousand dollars there, but you can't move that.
You mean, you can't use it for?
Can't move it at all, it sets there. It can't go into another budget, it can't go to the police department, because you can't up my budget.
So you can't pay for the stuff that you got out of that budget? The eight thousand dollars we budgeted, you can't pay for what you need out of that?
Exactly, I have no control of the court budget. But we can't move those funds, you can't plus a budget. You can plus a restitution fund through a budget. Very sensible.
Why don't we try and get Stuart from MML to come down? Maybe he can paint a bigger and better picture?
I'm sure he can.
Well, we'll try that for December, is that okay?
I'm sure I'm not explaining it right, I mean, Mayor was there on the, on the, we had a telephone conference with him.
And essentially, what happens, it doesn't change the money in and out. What it does is provide better accountability for accounting purposes, how the money's coming in. Versus, instead of everything just being put into a GR account, or a general leisure account, it's actually saying, okay, this money is specifically supposed to be for this. And what we, what I think we do is we table this conversation till next month, and see if we can get Stuart from MML down here. Invite him to explain it a little bit more in detail.
I guess basically what I'm trying to say is, in October, we approved the budget, we put eight thousand dollars in, into the slide. Next October, when we do the budget again, there's still eight thousand dollars there, because we can't touch it, we can't move it.
That's my question, why would we have money if we can't get out?
Exactly, so why, I mean, we have to budget that money, I have to bill the judge, I have to bill the court. At a daily cost. For that prisoner.
And the judge can't release the funds.
That money has to go somewhere, it can't go into my budget, it has to go into a restitution fund. Because we cannot increase my budget just on a limb in November.
Right, the judge can't release the funds from his budget.
We're not adding any new money, we're not, it's not costing us money, it's a matter of managing the money that's budgeted there for those inmates already. We just have to put it somewhere.
I'll call Stuart and run a simple can schedule down for December, providing the council will be involved in that. At this point, I think we do need a motion to table, to table this till December. Another motion to table, the accounting, police count issue until December, we're going to invite MML to come down. Councilman Watson, do we have a second on the motion? Second by Mr. Brandt, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, pass the six year old, this is table, if you have anything else.
Just rest of our things, numbers, for October, we made nineteen felony arrests. We conducted one hundred traffic stops, forty-two of those resulted in city citations, twenty-three resulted in state citations. And third, two warnings. And we made one, four felony drug arrests and two DWI's.
Charlie, you had a question back there.
Am I misunderstanding this, is there money that's somewhere, city, that we can't take out of the account? Are we just talking about, so the police, I mean, the court has ten or twelve thousand dollars or whatever, that's sitting there that we can't get transferred over to the general fund? Is that what we're talking about, or we just?
It doesn't, well, it ultimately stays in general fund. We can't move it to the police, it's budgeted for prisoners by the court. It stays in the court, it never moves.
And that just, I mean, really what we're talking about, from what I understand, is allowing the police department to have money available to them? And, and him to have a signature on that particular account, as opposed to the council needing to pay those bills?
Correct.
So we really don't have any money that's socked away anywhere, it's just, it's been accounted for in the general budget, and then budgeted over to the police department?
It's a procedural issue that we have to check the box in order to be in compliance with MML and budgeting.
Yeah, it said, it sounded as though there was money sitting somewhere that we couldn't get our hands on, that we had a rightful ownership in, and we were having trouble with that, so. Thank you very much for clearing that up.
City can get their hands on it.
Right.
We don't.
But you can through the city?
No.
No?
We just have to clear up this issue.
Okay.
And once we clear it up with MML, we can go.
Well, don't you project your income, I mean, from the past, don't you project your income, and that goes into your general account? And then you, your police department has a budget, and they said, I mean, it makes it sound like the money's gone, but it's not.
Right, it's not.
The money's not gone, it's always there. That's the problem, it doesn't move.
I'm confused why you can't keep that in your budget, I mean, you project, say, we're going to take in.
We can't, we can't project his, the court's, the court is a separate government. We cannot get inmate boarding for the court. He projects that, he has eight thousand this year for boarding prisoners. I have to bill him for those prisoners. You can't move money from the court to the police department to increase a budget. So therefore, that money just sets in the court's budget and never moves. Does that make sense?
Seems as though that should have been taken into account in the legend process in September or whatever, when they did the.
But I can't project his boarding.
At the maximum, he's going to spend it.
That was conversations we were having with MML at the time, was how to make sure that this is done properly versus.
Much, much richer than property, if I may do.
Same thing, they have a restitution fund.
They have a restitution fund?
Yes, in fact, that's what Chief Twitchell buys his cars off of, that he doesn't get on grants.
Well, Stuart here in December, and at that point, we can address the rest of this issue.
One more question.
What was it, about the police department?
I haven't, I don't know, I'll, I'll hand it to him.
Three hundred thousand, three hundred?
I don't know. I tell you, I think our total budget for, is around one point seven million.
Is that, is that available? Your budget available?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just go down to City Hall, ask them to see, see the budget.
Sometimes I'm a little resistant when I ask questions like that.
Well, that, it is a public record.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Been very near on a roadways, where it came in and knocked out, I know, the remainder of Chestnut, V Street. Louisville Street, High Street, or on Tenth Street, J, or State. That leaves a little bit on Old Wyro, and. Okay, and phase four. So they, they're going to shoulder them in their budget. We're hoping in a week or so, come back and shoulder, maybe in years, two, three. Some of the shoulders, we're not going to shoulder the entire road, all the shoulders have driveways driving to the step on. I felt like up here, the railroad tracks. When you came around on First Street, and left that great big drop off. On Chestnut? No, this side of the railroad tracks where it comes down on First Street. Okay, yeah, where we tied into Allen and First, the tie-out, okay. That area will get it, I know like on High Street, you're not going to see a lot of shouldering, because they tied right into the drives. You know, I mean, those. This looks like a mess up here. Well, I mean, it's, no, no, I disagree with you there, it looked like a mess before. I like what I see now, I know we need to shoulder it, but it was a mess before. Well, that's what I'm saying, when are they going to do that? Uh, we're working on it, like I said, I've got these guys keep in line, we've extended their, their contract, we've extended their time, they've got more roads. So, I'm pushing to get the paving done before I get, the shoulder I can do in cold weather, I can't pave when it's cold. So I'm wanting to get all the asphalt down that I can get, before I shove them into doing something I can do when training or in freezes and when it's cold. So, I'm hoping in a couple of weeks, we, we discussed shouldering today. But yes, that is, that is on the, on the deal, that tie-up is. Something, you know, like that is, I, I've got several that are high importance, ones there, ones at the elementary school, at the alley, the delivery alley is what I call it. Very steep drop-off there, I want that alleyway to be a smooth transition, and it's, but, but it needs to be. But like I said, I'm pushing for asphalt right now to finish their contract with us, on the asphalt. And we can shoulder through winter months, there's not a temperature requirement on the shoulder.
Bill, I've had a couple of phone calls in reference to how we established an order of precedent of roads. Why, why do we pay this road versus that road? So can you please just kind of go over that?
Fairly simple, roads that we actually pay for, what, the council and, and myself, and this was a previous council, that drove through and deemed as probably the worst roads, and I understand that you, that you paid those roads, then you've got another worse road. Okay, so you've got, the list changes. I feel like we've addressed some of the worst roads, one of the worst intersections in town was Twenty-Eighth, Ellen, and Fifth Street. Thought that was a terrible intersection there, Cawgill's Corner, whether, I don't care which way you was going, if you was coming from the middle school to go to the elementary, I mean, it was rough. Or if you continued north on Ellen Street, I thought that was rough, so.
You can get some line and work out where.
Yes, Ellen Street was extremely rough, so, so the order was, we looked at, obviously, how deteriorated the roadways were. But we also looked at use, traffic use, heavy traffic use. We thought that, in general, the roads between the schools, around the schools, was used probably most by just the community, whether it be school buses, out-of-town traffic coming to ballgames, people picking up or dropping off kids, and that's the roads that they bumped up. They thought there was more use on those roads than, you know, other roadways that may have been on the list. But I can promise you, the, the worst roads in town got paid, okay? Now, we have some more roads that are very bad.
And, and one of the things I was going to bring up with the council and the public, as I'm getting phone calls, as John's getting phone calls, as councilmembers, we're all speaking that to John, and he's making a list of, okay, can we get this done with what we're doing right now? What are we going to address next year? And we're, we're not ever in this position again, to where you can drive through town and hit a hundred poppers. So we're proactively going after the roads. I got a call about north of Sixth, or south of Sixth, but North Oak Street there. Between Tenth and Sixth Street, also got a call today about Gayan, Naya, and Lee. And I explained to that person I called that we do, we are aware that Naya and Lee Gayan have rattled roads. And what, and we're trying to figure out what it's going to take from Woodland, as far as money-wise, to put asphalt on those roads.
I know Naya and Gayan, I, I've heard of all the streets in, I'm going to tell you, just straight up, McLaren, Andrews Street, if you get the chance, ride down. Very rough.
That's horrible.
Yeah, they're very rough. You know, so if I had to do it again today, and we had this, what we have on the ground now, start tomorrow, I'm going to take every councilman that drives with me down there, that's a rough street. It's, it's, it's rough. So, you know, like I said, you, you get the worst streets, and then once. So, you know, like I said, you, you get the worst streets and then once all them are done, then you gotta know them right at the top of the list. Where is, who is, um, the church up here is, is very, very rough around here as well, in my opinion. Um, so, so the list continues to move, streets continue to move up the street, up the list as you, as you get these streets paved and, and, you know, taken care of. Um, obviously now, uh, Fifth and Allen and twenty-eighth, that's off the list. It's not even close. You know, let's not forget what it was prior to us paying. Because it was bad. I know you know, you drove a bus and they're jarring teeth out. You know, and, um, so, the list is, is a dynamic thing. It's not, it's not a static list. If you get one knocked off, there's another one there taking place. We've got plenty of streets to handle. I think we continue to look at those. Uh, I, right now, I can tell you I have five streets on my, that I'm budgeting for next year. Okay? Five different streets or new streets. I'm not saying these are the streets we do. Not, uh, I don't make that call. I just, as I get these calls coming in, I send it on and get a quote and that is, and it gives us a budget.
Yeah, and, and as a, just so bring everybody kinda up to speed, in our transportation trust fund where your tax dollars go to, there's fifty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. Now, that sounds like a lot of money. Gotta get you about eight-hundred and sixty feet of roadway.
So I was gonna say, the walking trail, ten foot wide, quarter mile long, is seventeen thousand, about two inches thick. We're putting in four to six. Um, I have one street, I think it's your street, right now, we've got a, uh, a potential, a potential issue with that. And the issue is that the alignment of the street does not match what the county has. So we're doing surveys now. I didn't think we would have to get this far in the weeds to get that. Basically, the alignment of the street and the easement for the street don't line up. Okay? Uh, if that makes sense. Like, it, it tells me my street should be here, but it's actually over here. So it's a delinquent issue. Uh, my, my street or road may not actually be on my easement. Yep, okay. Um, not the end of the world, but, go ahead.
The, the street, I guess part of it is the counties and part of it is the cities. Is there any way we could go about getting that turned over to the city that goes on down, um, on Allen Street? Part of that.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, Kimmy, do you think that the, the county would give that to us?
Absolutely they would.
And then maybe we could do something with it, get it fixed. It's horrible.
But I think on that is, um, I'm gonna call that, that Miller Hill, I guess.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Before we fully take it over from the county, I think that they may or should take some responsibility for maybe the drainage or something.
I bet they would.
We're doing them a favor by taking that street over, okay, for the maintenance and, and all that. Um, so maybe we get some piping coves, things like that. I also would caution on, I would, I, if we paved it as is, just due to the width of the street, would recommend making that portion of that road a one-way street. So you have traffic up to Red Bud and Country Club is two-way, okay? But once you hit what I call North Ellen, make it a one-way, and I don't care which way, but it is so narrow. And with the shouldering, it's impossible to shoulder that road, you know what I mean? So if, if we looked at that as an option, pave it for a one-way street to where it is by ordinance one-way. And then, like I said, if you just want traffic to go north on that road, that's fine, or just south on that road, that's fine. But make sure it's just a one-way street and it's properly marked. Uh, because I can promise you, when you put four inches up on that, I can shoulder it all day long. I'm just filling ditches, you know? So, but yes, it is, it's, it's bad. I mean, it's on the top five in, in town, in my opinion. It's, it's a very rough street.
Yeah, I believe, John, with that, with that particular stretch there from, with the two.
Country Slade?
Tenth Street.
Tenth Street?
Yeah. That, uh, you were, we're also heading to address a drainage problem.
That's right.
Although, we've paved a bunch of streets around them. Now we have to figure out, uh, the drainage issues that we're gonna have with that particular section of road. Because if we don't, we're gonna slump a bunch of asphalt down and it's gonna wash away.
We have, uh, that, that actual section's gonna affect the people that live in, on Davis Drive, of which I think there's three houses. And you have two houses that, that join that, that roadway or, let's say, a house and a trailer with the same drive. And then another house on the west side, and at the corner, you have Ernie Coffee's. I think your access is on Tenth Street, so.
Some of the stuff I have to ask you about, you sort of covered. But I have three different questions that I've had people ask me and I've had people come to my house today and talk about it.
Okay.
First one is one of the families came to my, uh, losing my board and said they had checked the schedule regarding the laptop. And he was told Andrews and McLaren wasn't on the schedule for now or next year.
Um, okay, half true. It's not on the schedule for now. Because the streets for now was set a year ago and those streets weren't on that schedule. The part of that that is a curious, not one person here has told me any street paving for next year, okay? That's to be determined. That's gonna be a street that I throw to you guys. I mean, I've been down. But we don't have a schedule for next year. I'm getting budgets for, like I said, five or six different streets. And, and you guys pick. I don't pick, okay? You guys are bossing that. So you guys, when you get those, you know, you're gonna look at it and go, okay, maybe you rate them the same way, maybe you have a different rating. Um, like I said, we went by how deteriorated they were, the number of people it would help, you know, the, the actual driveways on the street, the use, the this, the that. So next year's streets have not been determined by, by this council or anybody else that I know of.
Are concerned about maybe getting, uh, their cars torn up in some of those places there?
And, and like I said, that, you can tell them that, that the second part of that is not, um, this council sets the next year's streets for sure.
And what we'll be, what we will be doing as soon as we get some, a workable number of streets, John will bring that to the council. Council will say, okay, here's, here's what the cost is and.
Right.
What, what do we have the funds to do and this week we start.
Guys will list, basically, the streets that, that you guys have told me about in your award or that somebody made nod your award. And I try to get a price. Y'all go drive. And then when you're done, y'all got a month, two months. I mean, we give these out, I think, in the January meeting. And y'all just, you know, talk about it, discuss it, and you go, hey, here's, here's where we settled in at. And, you know, your top three or four streets and that's where we go. That's what we did before, okay?
Number two, I was told that there wouldn't be any more blacktop being done until next year. And I noticed that High Street and Doyle was done and working on it today. And one of those is one-way street. Why are they pinpointing one-way streets instead of some of these two-way streets that are so bad?
Both Doyle, there, there's not a one-way street. Maybe dead end. Okay, I understand that. Um, yeah. Um, those streets were on the list, which I, uh, thought everybody had a copy, but I can supply you guys with the copy of the list previously approved by the council. And Doyle Street was on there, High Street was on there. The street that's not getting it was, uh, Sixth Street between Oak and, Sixth Street between Oak Street and, and it's gravel right now. I can't think of that next street up there. That goes by where, uh, Billy Gates used to live there.
Seventh Street.
Is it?
So.
Between Sixth and Seventh?
So.
Okay. So, and, and that street didn't get the cut. Um, we had another street on there that didn't get it. But all the other streets that are listed on the last, on this last year's was, has been paved. We didn't add any streets that maybe, we added a section on Chestnut, hundred and forty-two feet. And I just took it to what I call the city limits, but it's the, basically, the, the two pillars at the cemetery, the rock pillars at the cemetery. Uh, we added a hundred and twenty-two feet on Tenth Street and B Street. And, but I think it may even been on the list, so. We didn't really target those. Uh, we just, they were on the list to be paved.
And I was told this, that, uh, long asphalt in the road over the country of that. So I saw it the other day and they had the road closed because it was.
That's Tenth Street. That's Tenth Street. That's the hundred and twenty-foot section on Tenth Street.
That's, that's, just that small section in there.
They just did a repair on that small section. They didn't, they didn't go all the way to the city limits. They just did the hundred and twenty-some feet of, of that roadway.
Was it, what they repaired was not city limits then?
City limits is, starts up there and I wanna say that's, I don't know the name of that drive where Ed Ponshul built all those houses.
Yeah.
Katy Lane.
Canuck?
Canuck later.
Well, Canuck's the county road that keeps on going down by, like, Cheewickers, but there's a little drive that cuts off by what I call Fox's Lake.
Yeah.
Katy Lane. Katy Lane.
Yeah.
That's, that's city.
But the work is being done in the city, not, not the city.
Right, right. That was, uh, our, our city limits goes to Katy Lane.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, not a problem. And I would say, you can assure them that no streets have been set final of for next year.
And we'll probably start talking that discussion probably in January now.
Right, right. We, we started in January. We had budgets. Uh, you get a better handle on your, uh, street tax at that time. You guys have seen it grow through the years, so you know what you got. And then you've got a list of five, six streets. Drive, you know, um, whether you break it up by wards or focus on one ward every so often, or however you guys do it, it's, it's fine with me. I don't. I just know that when I report a street or get a street reported to me, I'm getting a budget to let you guys make your decisions based on not only the, but the price.
Well, John, uh, thank you for giving us a report on that. And also I want to congratulate you on being our new.
Yeah, great.
Great.
Getting older. It'll be forty Friday. It'll be forty Friday.
Yeah.
So, uh, but, one other thing is, uh, the treatment plan. We're, we're gonna try to have the clarifier finished, hopefully, in the next week or two. At that point, I'm gonna call DNR to have them come down and walk through the new plant with both clarifiers going, with the new iteration system, all that. Just to, kind of a extending the, you know, the courtesy that they gave us during the time that we've been, you know, probably lagging on our, our improvements over the past five years. But in this last year, we really went major steps in the right direction. So I wanna bring them down, walk through the plant, show them our new system, um, and I'll probably coordinate that with, uh, Josh and Robbie. I'd like at least Robbie to be there as the informant and Josh to be there as the operator to go through and, and show the city's, you know, new treatment plan and, and work with them.
And it is beautiful. It's absolutely beautiful. I've been going down, go all the time.
So, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take them through that. We have a, what they call a semi-annual report due next month in December. That, that gets, that comes through council. You guys get to read it. It's, it's basically, every six months, they require us to, get them a report of what we've done. They don't want you to settle on your numbers, okay? So we're, we're gonna show them that we're not. And every six months since this has started, there's been major changes. We've came with lines, done collection system, organized treatment now. So we're moving in the direction they want us to move. And that just reaffirms what, what we're doing down there, okay?
Yeah, it's changed.
It has. It's, it's a good turnout for us.
Wonderful job.
Exciting.
They're part of it.
Yeah, we've, we've had good work down there, but.
Yes, we have.
City crew's been really good. Like I said, they're, they're busy with a lot of stuff. They always make time to get these improvements done. I call more than you guys know, call and rely on them a lot. I make several phone calls to Rob and all of them. Actually, I get Rob kinda mad sometimes because I got deadlines that I have to meet. And, you know, and he's got deadlines that you guys want to meet, so. Between me screaming at him and you guys screaming at him, he's busy. But, but we get there, so.
But I still love you.
Yeah, and that's, that's something for you guys to be proud of. You guys have come through a lot of stuff.
Need it.
You, you, you don't realize for a community decides how, how much work and how many projects you've got to finish. I mean, it's, it's substantial and I know from working in other communities, I'm getting a lot of questions. What are they doing? How are they doing it? We hear about it. We're driving through town, we're seeing new streets. And it's being noticed. So I wanna congratulate you guys on, you're kicking the can farther down the street. So that's good.
Thank you for helping us.
Yeah.
John, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, we've reached the end of, uh, the open session. We will leave going to closed session for revised Missouri statute, six, ten, point zero, two, one, personnel and real estate matters.
Sure.
Yes.
Um, I just got an email. The Missouri Common Ground Alliance, um, they have a summit, what they call it, is conference, every year in Springfield. I'm just requesting for two guys, it's a free class, and they have everything from equipment safety to CPR, troop safety, electric safety and everything. But I just need to know if we can get two guys a room for one night. For December seventh and eighth. Um, I actually got back there and looked after I got the email and it's.
When is it, Rob?
Seventy-four dollars a night. It's December seventh and eighth. I've got it up, seventy-two dollars a night.
For me, how many more?
And that's two, just two.
Who?
Um, Nathan Cox and, I don't know, maybe Ernie Mentola or myself. I'd like to get somebody.
Have they been there before? I think that two should go that have not been there.
Everybody but Nathan Cox has, has been before. He's the only one that has not been. I would like to go to get CPR and first aid certified again. I was with MoDoc. This is free and it does cost money to, usually it costs money to bring somebody in and train you, but this is a free class.
Right, and does, uh, the, and lots of people do that also, and if they give you teaching that.
They will. I, I always, whenever Ben was here, I would ask him all the time, can we get recertified?
I know they used to. I don't know if they still do that, but it's, you know, that's free also.
I didn't know if they would do it for us or not, but I would like to get everybody eventually first aid certified in CPR.
We'll backtrack.
One room for one night.
Backtrack, uh, this is on the maintenance report. Uh, Mr. Fourthman is requesting, uh, the two people be authorized to attend this free training. Uh, it's paid for with a lodging. If there are no questions at this time, entertain a motion. Should I approve or disapprove?
I'll make a motion, Will. Pay for the rooms.
We have a motion. We have a motion to approve. By Wayne, we have a second. Seconded by Paul. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? No. This passes six oh, we approve for the training. Uh, let the personnel know. As such, at this point, we, we have reached the end of our, uh, open session. We will go to closed session for revised Missouri statute, six, ten, zero, two, one, personnel, real estate, illegal. At this point, all entertain a motion and then a roll call vote.
I make a motion to go to health.
Open call.
Session and to closed session.
Open session and to close session. Close session.
Second by Marilyn Robero. Thank you.
Yes.
You do it. Marilyn, different.
Yes.
All what?
Yes.
Twenty grand?
Yes.
Eight-thirty, yes, eight-thirty, we have a closed session. Hey, at this point in time, the Dixon City Council is in closed session. The only authorized recording device is allowed to be-